It's now seven o'clock. It's time to call into order our meeting for this evening. This is the regular meeting of the Village of Oxford Planning Commission. It is the meeting for the 15th of January in 2019. It's now 7:00 PM, so I hereby call this meeting to order. If, as always, you will please join me as we pay our respects to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. Madam Secretary, if you would be kind enough to call the roll for this evening's meeting.
Sure. Here.
Here.
Alma?
Yes.
Fama?
Yes.
Curtis?
Here.
Douglas?
Here.
Ballard?
Here.
Deeg is absent.
Make a motion to excuse Gary Deeg from the January 15th Planning Commission meeting.
Support. All right, Madam Secretary, I have a motion to excuse the absence of Commissioner Deeg for this evening's meeting. I have support for that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, thank you. Gary Deeg's absence is excused. And thank you for the roll. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome our newest member, Justin Ballard, a good friend and neighbor, and we're delighted to have him here. Justin was just appointed by the council, and he's a noted and well-respected member of our community, and like I said, I think we're very fortunate to have him, and I'm very grateful to have him sitting on my side. So, welcome, Justin.
Thank you.
Enjoy your tenure here. We have a lot of fun doing this. All right, I would now then move on to item four, which is the approval of our agenda for this evening. You have that in front of you, and I'll accept any motion to approve that agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the Village of Oxford Regular Planning Commission meeting agenda for Tuesday, January 15, 2019.
Second.
All right. Madam Secretary, I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda, which is before us. I have a second for that motion. All those in favor of accepting this agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. We have an approved agenda. Next, I would like to move on to item five, which is approval of the previous minutes, which are again before you. These are from the meeting dated December 4th. And so I entertain a motion to approve those minutes, or as needed.
Our move to approve the minutes of December 4th, 2018, is presented.
All right, thank you very much.
A second?
All right, I have two motions. I have one motion there and two approvals, so thank you very much for that. The minutes have been submitted, and they are before you. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the December 4th, 2018 meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, good. Minutes are approved. Thank you all very much for that. Madam Secretary, I come to item six, which is the correspondence. I'd like to know if we have received any correspondence other than what is submitted with our packets this evening.
There is none.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. No correspondence to be filed. That brings us to item seven, which is the primary interest of tonight's meeting. We are about to enter a public hearing for the proposed outdoor sales ordinance. I would entertain a motion to enter that public hearing.
Make a motion to open a public hearing of the proposed outdoor sales ordinance at 7:03 PM.
Support. All right, Madam Secretary, I have a motion and support to enter a public hearing at 7:00, what was it?
7:03.
7:03. All those in favor of entering a public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. We are now in a public hearing. All right, so our topic for tonight's public hearing is the proposed outdoor sales ordinance, which we have been working on for the last several weeks and months. Given that, Mario, I would turn the floor over to you and ask you to make an introduction and a summary of the things that we have discussed that have brought us to this point.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Good evening.
Tonight, we're here to go through a form of a public hearing for our efforts to regulate outdoor display sales. Before us tonight is a language with a minor tweak from our previous discussion. Mainly, the ordinance is broken down into three different areas, the first being an amendment to the existing definitions to specifically define what is, what would be a, both an accessory outdoor display, meaning allowing an existing business to have a small area in front of their business to display something, and an outdoor display sales type of business, which is something where, where a business whose principal activity is consistent in storage, display, or sale of goods. The second portion of our amendment revolves around amending the table of permitted uses that would indicate that open-air businesses, which are already defined in the ordinance, are special use in C2, and then outdoor display sales being temporary use in the C1 transition, and then accessory outdoor display, which is a smaller area, being permitted by right in the C1 transition. And then finally, our third amendment revolves around amending the specific standards for, and creating new language for, outdoor display sales. And in that language is where we have our dimensional standards for setbacks, and we have our requirements that outlines the process by which a applicant would receive a, the approval to operate such a business. So, given that, I'll gladly take any questions.
All right, Commissioners?
Public. Public first?
Yes.
All right, we can do that. All right, because we are in a public hearing, I would welcome any comments from the public to speak on behalf of this, whether it be pro or against, or even just a question. So, the floor is open for that. Does anyone care to speak this evening? All right, I see none. So then I open that up to my fellow Commissioners.
I think, make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:06.
All right. Support. Madam Secretary, I have a motion to close public hearing. There being no public comments on regards to this, and so I have a motion and a second for that. All those in favor of closing our public hearing at 7:06 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, we exit then public hearing. That brings us to item eight on our agenda, which is Old Business, which is our discussion regarding outdoor sales ordinance. All right, Jack, please.
I apologize I wasn't here last time. I went through this, and I talked with Joe Mador today, and I had a couple of questions, and I just want to run them by us tonight to see if we would consider some of these opinions that I have in including them in here or changing them. The first one is item number eight. Under A, general standards, we have a, the temporary use approval granted by the Planning Commission shall expire on December 31st. Joe felt that expire, expiration on December 31st for all permits was a good idea, and we addressed one item. What happens when an applicant comes to us in July 1 and says, "I would like to have outdoor sales." The Planning Commission approves an outdoor sales permit. What is the best way to do it? Do you charge them the fee for five months? Or do you charge them the fee for 12 months and have it expire on December 31st? My recommendation would be to determine what that fee is going to be, and included in section eight, I would say prorate the fee on the monthly cost from July 1st or later. And what I mean by that is when an applicant comes in on, to the Planning Commission the first week of July, looking at the business side, do you charge them a whole year period of fee for five months? Or do you charge them prorated? My suggestion is prorated. The second one I wanted to look at is under item number nine, and it's mid-sentence. It says, "The village manager shall have the authority to temporarily rescind the approval and require the business owner to cease and desist operation of display." And it says, "And until the Planning Commission has an opportunity to review the perceived hazards." Well, I'm kind of the opinion that the Planning Commission reviews and writes and suggests ordinances for the community. The ordinance officer and the village manager are the policing agency for the village. So, I would like to strike, I would like to put a period where it says, "Business owner to cease and desist operation of this display." Period. And then I would go down to the sentence where it says, "The Planning Commission shall," cross that out, and say, "The village manager shall review the circumstances related to noncompliance with the site plan approval and/or the hazardous condition to determine what, if any, changes are required in order to eliminate the hazard." And why I say that is, the village manager would then consult with the ordinance enforcement officer. They would be the ones going out to review the ordinance violation, alleged ordinance violation, if you will, and they can determine administratively whether it should be changed, should not be changed. We're already giving them the power to temporarily rescind the approval, so we should give them the power to re-engage the approval process, rather than bringing it back to the Planning Commission, which is not a policing agency.
We are not an enforcement body.
Yeah. So, that's another change I had. The last change I had in here was item B, administrative extension. I kind of looked at all that and trying to keep it simple, working with Joe. I came up to page six. It says, "Period as part of the conditions of approval." I crossed all that out, and I said, "The village manager may allow the applicant to request a 12-month extension at the end of the original approval period." And why I'm saying the village manager is, they've come in front of us, and they've proven what they want to do. They've had a given amount of time to prove that they're going to do it. They haven't had a policing agency ordinance review, village manager rescind. So, if they're doing everything according to the ordinance, why not allow them to continue through an administrative review? We do it a lot of times in the township where we have administrative reviews for plans versus having to take this whole applicant through the site plan approval process again. They can get their application approved at the village manager level. We've given the village manager the tool to rescind. Let's give it the tool to put it back in place. Those are my only comments.
All right, thank you, Jack.
Yes.
The last one. You totally lost me where you were starting and stopped.
Okay. So, take page six, top paragraph. It starts off, "Period as part of the conditions." I cross that off, and then it says, "The Planning Commission." Cross off the Planning Commission, and insert, "The village manager may allow for the applicant to request a 12-month extension at the end of the original period."
And remember, this is just for administrative extensions.
Administrative extensions.
Yeah, this is, and that's exactly what it is, an administrative extension.
We are not reviewing site plans at that time. If they have had no complaints or violations, let the village manager administratively do it. We're not a policing agency.
It's an administrative extension. It should be done by them. I have to agree with you, Jack.
Follow that, Mo.
Yes, but I'm trying to read the whole sentence, which starts on page five.
It starts on page five.
Right. It starts on page five, but I crossed all that.
So, stop talking, so I can read the whole sentence. So, you crossed off all?
I crossed off all the first part.
I think it might be helpful to read the revision allowed from the beginning of B all the way through, so that we're not confused about it.
Okay, so you want what item B should read?
Correct.
Okay, item B, in my mind, reads administrative extension. Go to page six. "The village manager may allow for the applicant to request a 12-month extension at the end of the original approval period."
I don't agree, Jack. I think you should keep the wording on page five and change Planning Commission to village manager. If the village, I'm sorry, if the village manager determines that an applicant shall be harmonious with adjacent existing uses, and the applicant requests the option for an additional time period, as part of the conditions of approval, the village manager may allow for the applicant to request an extension, blah, blah, blah.
I'm not going to keep it that intricate. I try to keep it simple because we already give the village manager back in paragraph nine, the opportunity to rescind the license. Why would they add, why would they bring the license or application approval forward if they have a hazardous situation that they've already rescinded the application for?
Okay.
So, if that applicant should request an extension, the village manager would say, "No, you have had, yeah, ordinance violation. We are not doing an extension. You must go back in front of the Planning Commission."
Okay.
Isn't this saying, if we gave you, if we approved your application, now you can go, I mean, that's all it's saying. It's not saying, I don't think it's saying what you think it says. If the Village, if the Planning Commission determines that the application is harmonious with the adjacent existing uses, so we've approved it, and now you want an extension, comma, now you go to your manager. I think you just, I think you're missing up comma or something, because I'm not sure you're reading it right.
I'm probably not reading it right, but I'll, I can give you a clean copy and go back and show you what. I'm trying to get some of this stuff out of here that's redundant in previous numbers, and trying to get us out of being a policing agency is all. I want to have the village manager to have the ability to do an administrative approval of the extension. If they haven't had any problems with that business, why would they have to come back here to get an extension? That's all.
Yeah, they shouldn't have to.
But this first thing is saying, the Planning Commission determines that, and then after that.
Why does the Planning? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Rose.
If I may, I think it is, Jack, I see what you're saying in terms of trying to simplify it, because kind of implied in this language is the idea that during the original review, if the Planning Commission determines this isn't going to be harmonious enough, during the original review, the Planning Commission can say, "You will be allowed to go for an extension later on." So, it is implying that in there. So, I can see how you're saying that would be kind of, you would, it would be part of, once again, part of that original review where we say, "Oh, by the way, do you want to have an extension? If you do, you have to let us know upfront."
See, that's.
Whereas this, I see what you're trying to say, to simplify it and just say, and I would say, if we're just going to go allow for that, then it would make sense to just merely state, "The village manager may allow for an applicant to request an extension at the end of the original approval."
So, Mario, what was your thinking when you wrote out part B, administrative extension?
I think.
So, how, let's think, let's play that out. How exactly does that work?
Well, my, my thinking was, there would be someone that would come in, apply for something, and say, "Well, I just want to do this one season. I don't envision doing this for more than one, and that's it." And then, "Okay, we'll review it, approve it, and you're, for this year, you'll be doing, selling, you know, bikes outside your store or something." Another applicant would say, "Well, here's this thing, and I want to make this an annual thing. Every, every, every January, every May to June, I want to be able to have a yacht event," or, I mean, something, "a bike sale." And then you can say, "Okay." And then as part of the conditions of approval, that the Planning Commission would say, it would be, "The Planning Commission finds this use harmonious enough that they may apply for an additional approval administratively, rather than every year."
At the, at the time of the hearing, when they come to speak before us.
Rather than put the burden on them to every year come in front of the Planning Commission and say, "Oh, by the way, I'm doing this again. Oh, by the way, I'm doing this again." So, I think I kind of layered in some other additional things that I've seen in other communities, in which anytime someone wanted a temporary permit, they always had to come back to the Planning Commission. So, I could see it being, you know, to make it administrate, if, if you feel that, you know, once is enough, then, then maybe rewrite it to say, rewrite it to mainly say that the village manager may grant an ex, grant an extension.
Just a minute, Chuck, hold on.
For a 12, for a, for a 12-month period at the request of the owner. So, yeah, just make it simpler that way. It would make sense.
Yeah, and what I was trying to get rid of is, we're going to have to train every applicant to come up here to say, "Oh, I want an extension."
It's true.
"I may want an extension in 12 months."
Right.
So, you know, it's like, everybody's going to be saying that anyway. So, let's just say, if the applicant wants an extension, the village manager may allow that applicant to request a 12-month extension. They're the ones holding the key that says they have or they have not had a problem that has been non-harmonious.
Right.
Or it has been hazardous to the community. They'd say, "No." Rather than making, training our applicants to come in here and say, "Oh, by the way, at the end of 12 months, I'm going to come in for an extension."
So, Mario's thinking was before the fact.
Right.
And what you're considering is after the fact.
Yeah, if they've proven themselves.
Yeah, so the original applicant comes up and says, "I want this for six months plus 12 months. That's my administrative extension."
Right.
Okay? And we find that their request is harmonious and in line with the environment, the community, and the standards, yada, 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 all that, then we can, we can grant them.
Up to a 12-month.
Up to a 12-month administrative extension. However, what Jack is saying is that for permit renewals, it should be on the village manager.
And actually.
And that's based on, you've been a good citizen and a good business, and you're, you're upholding the rules that we set forth for you, and nobody's complained, and we haven't had any infractions, so the village manager just writes.
Yeah.
Am I correct, Jack?
Yes.
Is that two distinct things, Mario?
It is, and I think that actually makes more sense, believe, because, because then it's merely saying, "We're going to grant you this because based on your application, we think you're going to be, you're going to work out." And then after their initial period, if they want an extension, then, you know, you won't know until after the fact anyway, if it's harmonious.
That's correct.
And if there are no complaints, if there's nothing hazardous.
That's correct.
So, it does make sense to do it after the fact, and then just give the owner the right to approach the village manager and say, "Well, I did this thing this last summer. I want to do it again."
Follow-up, Jack?
Yeah.
Commissioners?
I have other items.
Okay, let's not go on to that yet. Anything from you?
No.
Mr. Schneider, please approach the bench and state your name and address, please.
Chuck Snyder, 2681 Hadley Road, Lapeer, Michigan. So, my suggestion to you is, at the top of page six, end of the first line, the sentence will begin with, "The applicant," change the word to, to "may," "the applicant may request an extension at the end of the original approval period. Such an extension shall be reviewed and granted by the village manager." Period. That's the sentence. And the caption is administrative extension. This other stuff, you don't need. I mean, the full option concept is totally unnecessary. "It was harmonious when you granted them the thing in the first place."
Once again, that's.
Chuck, read it again, if you would, please, what you, what you said.
It starts with the, at the very end of the first sentence, says, "The applicant," instead of the word "to," but "may," "request an extension at the end of the original approval period. Such an extension shall be reviewed and granted by the village manager." Period.
Either way, it's written, it just kind of means the same to me.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Chuck.
Yeah.
Appreciate your, your input. Rose, do you have anything in regards to this, what we're talking about right now?
Not that one. I want to go back to number eight.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Okay. You mentioned prorating the fee based on a monthly cost. That's going to be the statement, right? Not, not putting any June, July, August, or September months in there.
You have an option to put a month in there. If you apply after, if you apply in April, you pay the whole thing. If you apply in June, you, you pay five months. You can do all of that. I chose July 1st being the middle of the year.
I think if we're going to do a proration, it should be for the months, no matter what, what the month is.
Prorated monthly.
That's fair.
Just prorated monthly, not, not if you do it in April, or if you do it in August or whatever.
I just go like that.
And then council determines the amount of.
That's correct.
Okay.
If I may.
Mario, please.
And this is totally based on how the council normally does the fees, but typically, a fee for this type of application is intended to just cover the cost of doing the review of an application. So, if, for example, if there is a public hearing, and there is a cost associated with the village for sending out notices and putting it in the paper, you know, for that, those costs are built into the fee in addition to having the professional review it. And then that's it. So, whether that, that review is done in January, or whether that review is done in November, the costs incurred by the village are the same. Now, if the village does do something different, where they, where they roll in some administrative costs they feel is appropriate for different applications, and that's, that's fine, and then it probably makes more sense to do it administrate, uh, prorated. But, but it all depends on how the fee structure is, how the fee is defined. And, you know, something like this is, usually isn't too expensive for the applicant, because you don't necessarily want, because prorated usually also involves more of a licensing structure, in which someone pays an annual license. That's usually done, for example, with pawn shops, like people, the places that have pawn shops, every year, someone has to come in and pay, say, $1,000 to operate for 12 months. So, that's a license fee. So, but I'm not as familiar with your, your fee structure, so I don't know what the case is for that. Just an example of what.
Justin?
Uh.
Take a breath in like you wanted to say something. And you don't have to. It's there for you if you want it.
I would leave the fee structure straight as it is, as, as far as, it's because it's a temporary, temporary use, right? It is something that is regardless of, if they do it, if they apply for it in April, May, or June, it's still for a temporary period of time, and it ends in December. So, they're, they're using it for a very specific amount of time, and it should not, the fee should not change. That's my belief.
All right, thank you for that. Maureen, you are on the council. You have familiarity with this. Does the council want to see prorated, or are they just going to want to see a, a flat fee for the year, and if you come in in November, it's your.
There's no fees discussed in this at all. I wouldn't even worry about, talk about proration. When council sets the fees.
Yeah. Mario, go ahead.
I, there's, it's not like we're putting a dollar amount on this.
Yeah.
The council sets the fees, they can discuss that if it's necessary, but it likely won't be, because it's not a, a money-making proposition.
I, yeah, I get that. I get that. And then that's the important point. Mario, I hadn't thought about that when you mentioned that, and that's really, to me, that's the key, is that regardless of whether you apply in January or December, the cost that the village bears to create that approval is the same.
I mean, that's.
If you decide to come in in December to buy this thing, you got to, you got to renew it in January. Sorry, it's, that's unfortunate, but that's the way it goes.
And that's why we have them all expire at the same time.
Right.
And chances are, and, and whenever there's an annual renewal of something, especially because it'd be administrative renewal, and it'd be about the village manager, you know, that would be like a small, you know, I don't want to say, but like 25 bucks or something, if that, because it just takes the village manager, you know, an hour or two to take a look at the site, or go run out there or something. Whereas, the, once again, if it's the initial review, if someone like myself is reviewing it, then it might, you know, cost a little bit, it would cost a lot more, because, you know, you know, spending several hours doing it.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead, Jack.
If we took the one out on eight that I requested was the prorate, take that one out. Does everybody agree?
I, I agree.
I would agree.
Okay. So, then, the one, item nine, that I said, where we, we end that at the word "display." If you want, I can read the whole thing.
I think that's wise.
Excuse me?
Please do.
She says that's wise. I do, I agree.
On item nine, it goes, "The owner of the display shall maintain compliance with all site plan conditions of the original Planning Commission approval. The owner of the display shall maintain responsibility for all goods and other display elements in order to protect the public from safety hazards associated with the display. In the event the village manager becomes aware of any violation of the original site plan, approval, or hazardous conditions associated with the previously approved outdoor display, the village manager shall have the authority to temporarily rescind the approval and require the business owner to cease and desist the operation of the display."
Period.
I want to say, "Period," right there. I want to scratch out, I'll tell you the scratch. I want to scratch out, "And until the planning commission has the opportunity to review the perceived hazardous condition," period, "the planning commission shall..." I want to cross that out and I want to insert, "The village manager shall review the circumstances related to the non-compliance with the site plan approval and/or the hazardous condition in order to determine what, if any, changes are required in order to eliminate the hazards to the public health, safety, and welfare, and ensure compliance with the site plan approval."
Mario, are you good with that?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, you know-
Does that make sense to you? I mean, I understand where he's going with this and I have to say, I agree.
And it does make sense because the planning commission is not an enforcing-
The idea of things continuously coming back before us for the most picky-uned things, which should be under the jurisdiction of the village manager. This seems very appropriate.
Right. And then that way, the situation gets dealt with quickly.
Yes.
You know, you don't have to wait for a planning commission meeting. If it's something that the village manager takes care of quickly, then that's a service to both the public and to the property owner. So that way, the property owner is not in-
All right. So, do we need to even think about the fact that, what if there is a, I can't think how to say it, the business owner does not agree?
He's still going to get it rescinded. The village manager has that authority.
Okay, the village, the business owner doesn't agree.
Right.
I mean, you got, you have a conflict here. I mean, the village manager has the right to order cease and desist, but the business owner says, "No, no, 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 that's not right. I'm not, I disagree with your claim." So where does it go then?
Because it's an ordinance, zoning ordinance issue, the ZBA typically has review authority to, it's a method of- -belief from the administrative interpretation. So it's an administrative interpretation of zoning ordinance and those always get appealed first to the ZBA.
Okay.
So that way, the property owner has somewhere to go to.
Not that it's likely, but it's just nice to know that, you know, the citizens are protected.
Right.
Should there be an issue of a conflict of, not interest, but conflict of, you know, interpretation, I guess. Okay, good.
Okay, so-
All right, so does everybody then agree that Jack's consideration for paragraph nine be considered as read?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. We agree with that.
The other one was B, administrative extension. It starts off in it, and I'll read what I'm crossing off first. It says, "If the planning commission determines that an application shall be harmonious with adjacent existing uses and the applicant requests the option for additional time," period, "as part of the condition of approval." So, I wanted to cross that out because you're telling all of our applicants, "You need to ask upfront if you're going to extend this another year."
Change.
Otherwise, they're going to have to come back to the planning commission with the same redundant material that we approved the first time, and they have had no violations. You can administratively approve that extension through the village manager.
Okay, if you're granted-
A permit.
If you're granted a permit-
Yep.
-in August. It's up in December. Why can't you just then go to the village manager and say, "I request an extension"?
That's what I'm asking to change to item B2.
Mm-hmm. I mean, it, okay, it shouldn't have to come back before us.
Well, according to this-
As long as they've done what they agreed to do, they, I mean, I can't see a reason for that to either be, one, done in advance, or, two, come back before us.
According to B, administrative extensions, that's what they have to do. I would like to eliminate that. And Chuck offered up some verbiage and I offered up some that says, "The village manager may allow the applicant to request a 12-month extension at the end of the approval period." That keeps us out of the loop. They don't have to come back here asking the same stuff in December for next year if they've already done it in July, August, September.
That's certainly more streamlined, isn't it?
Yeah.
Maureen, do you have?
I just want to make sure that's out, so if the village manager has a concern, he can send it back to the planning commission.
Such extension shall be reviewed and granted by the village manager if the village manager determinations, "The applicant has operated in keeping with all conditions of approval originally granted by the planning commission." I'll read on. And it does cover that, Maureen.
I know that, but we're cutting things out and I want to make sure we don't cut things out.
Yeah, well-
Chuck cut out that whole section.
It's okay, it's the last sentence. But it's okay to cut things out to streamline things that aren't-
The last paragraph, Maureen, the last paragraph addresses what you're concerned about.
As long as we don't cut it out.
And that, I wouldn't have that cut out.
I'm just cutting out that first part under B that states, "If the planning commission determines that an application shall be harmonious..."
Are you good with this?
Oh, absolutely.
I am too. Okay. I don't know, I'm good with this.
Because right below it, in item number one, it clearly states, "They must have met all the conditions and the operation of temporary use shall not be negatively impacting existing adjacent landowners. If granted, an administrative extension shall be for 12 months at the village manager's discretion." So that's all covered below it.
And of course, Maureen, as you can see in the last paragraph, it does say, "The village manager has the right to be able to send them back to us."
We're not cutting that out.
I'm not, I'm not-
You know, the thing is, I can see all of this again next month. You guys will never see it again. I can vote it out, I can make all the changes I want next month. So, yeah, I just want to make sure you guys know.
We're not going to change that. Okay. Everybody agree that Jack's recommendations, as we change them, are good to go?
Yes, I agree.
Sure. I'll see him write.
Anybody complain? Okay.
I will give my papers tomorrow.
I agree with those changes. I have a couple of minor-
We're going to hear those next. I just want to try to-
Oh, you want to know about this? Yes, I'm in agreement.
Yeah, just, so, okay. Looks like, Jack, good job. I thank you for all of that. Leslie, go ahead and take the floor and tell us what else you would like to consider.
Well, the little one, Mario, is I have a typo on page six in, on the third line. The second village manager-
Manger?
Yes.
Ah, those village mangers!
It happens all the time.
We see that and then, you know, that's where spell check will not help you at all, Mario, I'm sorry to say, because the village does have a manger. It's somewhere. I don't know where it is, but it's out there.
We can't display it.
What else do you-
That's right. Can't put it out in public, right?
And the other question I guess I have is trying to formulate a what-if. For my own understanding, if a business is in operation at a site for part of the year using outdoor display sales and that business either closes temporarily or perhaps a different business is subleased there, how would the ordinance apply if a business is not in continuous operation?
Now, typically, whenever a use is approved, the non-conforming section applies, I believe it's non-conforming section. But basically, if a use ceases within six months, then, and then all the approvals and everything associated, and any non-conformity status and all their statuses go away after six months. Now, in this case, because it's, the ordinance specifically says December 31st, then the more stringent ordinance would apply. So for example, if they ceased operation on April 1st, then they have all, then after six months, then it ends. But if they ceased operation September 30th, it would end December 31st because it specifically says a date in here for that.
Okay. Okay.
To address Leslie's question, I think the worst-case scenario is if somebody gets an application approved and they shut or change in January, you'll have 11 months of conflict. But if they cease or desist in September, you'd have three months. So after six months, you'd have that business that filed out in January and then it would close in six months. You could eliminate that.
So Leslie, it seems to me your question is about the transferability of this permit. Is that correct?
That's one-
Somebody new moves into this space-
That's one conceptual question I have.
And there's a permit writing on this property.
Right. And so, that, I would imagine that that second business now has to apply in bringing their site plan before the commission.
It is not transferable.
Right. But I also guess I was-
Say that, Mario? Does it need to, I mean, we're assuming that that's the case, but does everybody understand that?
What if there's no second business? What if a business just decides to, you know, close and leave their inventory there or continue to occupy the site but isn't really operating as a business anymore? How is that addressed?
Well, once again, if they've received approval, then they would have to maintain compliance with all conditions of approval to be considered a permitted business.
Okay.
If they cease operation for six months or come to a violation of the site plan, then the village manager can take enforcement action.
It's enforced by the village manager? Okay.
Yep. And they have various ordinances they could apply to try and-
Does that satisfy your concerns, Leslie?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right. Maureen?
Oh, I have things. And I'll start with that one. If somebody closes for four months, I'm not sure they want all the craps in all their So we can get back to that. Just keep thinking as we're discussing this. The fencing, the opaque fencing. Can we note that that not be used for, that it'll be free from any display materials?
The fencing won't have display materials on it, you mean?
Chained to it, on it, hanging from it. I think it needs to be, I think the display materials all have to be away from that fence.
Display materials in terms of the actual items maybe being hanged on it or like just signage? Like if they just want to put a sign on it?
I mean, if Chuck's selling those north-south things that go on the top of a barn-
Goes on the fence.
That shouldn't hang from the fence.
But you don't have the right to not make it hang on the fence because you're requiring the fence.
It can be somewhere other than on the fence. That fence is-
Well, my neighbors don't even want the fence, so, you know, why are we dictating what goes on the fence?
I don't want things leaning on the fence.
Number two, she's dialing.
Being attached to the fence. I think they should be free from the fence. And that's my opinion.
It's side, this item right here, item six. Maureen, if you're going to engage Chuck, I really want Chuck to stand up at the podium. Do you want to pursue that line of questioning?
Who, me?
Yeah. Or that-
I don't, my opinion is, I think that fence should be free from all the display materials.
We should add that in there. Any display area adjacent to the residential use zone property shall provide an opaque fence six feet in height, compliance with the standards of section 6.1.3, and no items will be hanging from the fence for retail sale.
I have, that should be free from all display materials. If that's good language. I don't know if that's good language or not, Mario.
Shall not be used as a display board?
Well, if somebody has car parks, they should have a bunch of fenders leaning against the fence.
Hanging on the fence.
Right.
Chuck, please, go ahead and up to the podium, please, and state your name and address.
Snyder, 2681 Hadley Road. So what's the logic of saying that you can't put something on the fence? The only person that's going to see it is the customer of the business. The adjoining neighbor doesn't see it. The people who are coming to the business see it.
Can I engage Chuck?
Yes, you may.
I don't want to get engaged. Okay, go ahead.
You've been a mayor for years. Say you have, pick something. I'm trying to think of something tall. Something, I don't want things sticking out over that fence. I don't want things-
That's different.
I don't want things leaning on that fence that stick out above it.
Sticking above it is different.
I don't want you to put, I don't want you to put shelving on it that have things sticking up above that fence.
Why?
Because that's not what the fence, the fence is to separate the residential next to you from your business.
And it does that.
Not if things are jetting out over that fence, leaning against the fence.
Jetting over is different than attaching to.
Okay, leaning on, jetting over.
No basis for that.
Any thoughts?
No basis at all. If you're, I agree with you that things shouldn't go over the fence because then they're not concealed or hidden and the purpose of the fence is to screen things.
I don't think they-
That I can't attach something to my fence, tell the neighbor he can't attach anything to his fence then.
I don't think they should be chained to the fence.
Tell the neighbor they can't put anything on their fence, they can't lean anything on their fence. Give them the same requirement.
Okay.
Because you're not-
Because they're also in theory in the same zoning district, so they, if they're going to have sales.
If I can, they can lean shit against the fence, then why can't I put on the side of the fence they don't even see? Because I'm going to see their stuff. I see their crap laying in their yard.
I agree with that.
I see their barbecues, I see their chase lounges, I see their towels laying around. So why am I-
Towels. I thought you said cows. I'm like, you don't have cows in the village.
So they're out there sunbathing and they leave all that crap laying out in the air. So-
All right, thanks, Chuck.
What more, better looking than they are.
All right, Justin? Do you have thoughts on this? I saw you squirming over there.
It's one of those really, I don't know if you can encapsulate everything, that's part of that. Is there any ordinances that currently that exist about signage on fences? Right? Because that would then, that would then, any existing ordinances would then basically apply to that fence for a business related to it. Other than that-
Yeah, that's where generally there should be ordinances on the books that address the majority of the issues. For signage, adherence to the sign ordinance, that would be, you know, we permit wall signs, we can permit freestanding signs in certain locations and attach to the principal structure It does get tricky when it comes to trying to address some of these issues because sometimes it's not, I'm trying to think of another better word for it, but other than light, sometimes they are, they're light ordinances to try and deal with when people have leaving towels or leaving anything in their yard. But then, you know, it's dependent upon the existing language and how it's worded and then how it's interpreted by the enforcement officer.
Right.
I can actually agree with something Chuck said, and I guess if he hangs something out of it on the interior, on the interior, I'm not sure, but I don't want things jetting up over that. I don't want a six-foot fence with eight-foot lances leaning against or anything.
All right, so I believe, hold on a second. I believe it was the intention of the commission to provide a bit of privacy screening from the surrounding properties and such that we asked for an opaque screen. All right? The screen is six feet tall, something like that. If Chuck puts a 12-foot metal rocket ship in his display yard, that fence is not going to screen that rocket ship. So I'm personally not opposed to allowing things to be mounted to the display property side of the fence. I don't even know how to say you can't mount anything to the top of the fence because you're going to see the rocket ship anyway. Okay? So I'm not really, this is a gray area. It's really going to be very difficult to control this. You know, I know that, I think, I'm speaking for Maureen, but I think that Maureen is trying to make this look trashy. And I, you know, I'm sure that's probably her intent. But hanging a barn star on the side of a fence is certainly an appropriate use of that space and a very good way to display a barn star.
On the inside or outside?
On the inside. You know, I mean, on the inside. You know, the face, if you put it on the outside, you're violating the intent of the fence. So I'm not sure about this. I don't know how to put words in here, maybe Jack's come up with something, but I don't know how to put words in here to try to accommodate Maureen, but to allow Chuck the freedom in his particular case, which is what we seem to be discussing, you know-
Actually, I wasn't, but okay.
How he can utilize, you know, he's trying to display, you know, he's trying to display. Jack, go ahead, please.
Okay. I think we have it covered in many ways, except we don't have the inside of the fence. You have the fence opaque, so you can't see inside. But if you can't see inside, you could hang things on the inside of the fence because you'll never see them. Number one. Number two, if you hang things in an outdoor display area, that area shall not exceed 40% of the lot. So if you hang a piece on a fence and the fence is an eight-foot piece of fence, that's four foot or six foot by eight foot. That's 48 square feet. You're already taking into consideration because you're using it for display. So I think you're right. If you hang that on the outside of the fence, that is included in your square foot measurement of the property for this outside display. So inside the fence only. You don't want a bunch of things hanging on the outside of the opaque fence. On the inside of the fence, that's kind of like inside your yard.
And then, can we go back to... I think we touched on the change of an ownership. Is this going to run with the business owner or the property owner?
The business, the applicant, whomever the applicant is. So if they're both property and business, yeah, whomever the applicant.
And it's non-transferable.
All right, do we want to entertain a change to item six on page five regarding the fence? Do we want to try to fine-tune this a little bit to talk about the idea of using a fence for... As a display area? Or do you want to just leave it as it is and see what shakes out? I'm trying to knock these down one at a time before we move on.
Yeah.
And it sounds to me like we don't have a consensus on how this should say, so I think I'm inclined to leave it like it is and we'll see what happens.
I'd like to leave it like it is.
That's fine.
You know, and if we find this becomes a problem, then we'll... I don't know, maybe the next time we go around here, we'll talk about maybe tightening this up a little bit more. Chuck, I expect you to...
So we're not going to put inside the yard? We're just going to leave it like it is?
Well, unless I hear verbiage that tightens this up further. And so far, I don't hear a consensus.
Would we need to look for this in the original site plan that the applicant is intending to use their interior fence as part of their display to follow up on Jack's comments? So that would be factored into their square... square feet of display area at that time.
Is that the way you want to consider that, Leslie?
Wouldn't that be where we would pick this up? And that way, we don't have to put language into every item here for every possible contingency because they would bring it to us at the beginning, and that's where... How we would know and how we would interpret whether they were in compliance.
See, the interesting... If you go to item four, it says the combination of the gross floor area.
Ah.
See, so we're talking about horizontal planes versus vertical planes. And so I heard what you said, Jack, but the first thing that occurred to me was, okay, well, a fence is not a horizontal plane. And we're talking about square footage on it from a floor area as opposed to a wall area. So I'm not really certain that I agree with Jack's assessment that using a fence would consider it to be part of their square footage because it's not floor area. Question. Chuck, did you have a question, please?
Well, I just...
To the podium, please. And like always, state your name and address first, please.
Snyder 2681 Hadley Road. I think that we have to take into consideration as the store owner is trying to display the product he's selling. So I can lay all this stuff on the ground, but that's not how the consumer perceives it. They want to see it hanging on a wall or a fence or whatever, like they're going to do at their home. So having this... You're forcing me to put this fence up, which I gladly do, no problem, but here again, I have the in-and-out opportunity to display stuff on this fence as the consumer is going to utilize it at their home. It's about... It's just like you're selling your house and you kind of stage the house to...
I understand.
To appeal to the buyer. Well, that's what we're doing. We're trying to appeal to the buyer. And we'll use that fence, not in an attractive way. It's going to be... If anything, the fence, which is just a big old bare wooden fence, is going to look a whole lot more attractive when it's got stuff attached to it.
From the inside.
On the inside.
Yeah. And that's... I think that's...
I'm trying to figure out. Maureen, you wanted nothing outside of the fence.
And I don't want things sticking out above it that are leaning on it. The fence also has to be maintained. And while Chuck, you may fully well maintain your fence, I think we all know that there's a lot of fences out there that aren't maintained. We get 500 people leaning things against the fence, that fence isn't going to stay. And I just want to make sure that... I can already hear certain members of the community yelling at me for allowing outdoor storage. I don't want to give them any more, and you know who they are.
I wish they would have come tonight.
I got the lady in the apartment saying to me, she's yelling at me because she doesn't want a fence back there. She wants to look at my stuff.
She must be a good friend of yours because you bring her up every meeting. Let it go.
I heard her. Do we have consensus that we're going to let item six go as-is? Speak now or forever hold your peace, or at least until the next time we address this ordinance. All right, Maureen, did you have other items you wanted to discuss?
I think I'm good.
Leslie?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
If we give somebody approval and it turns into a disaster, what are our odds?
Village manager rescinds the permit.
Okay. No, but based on... What do we have to base that on? I mean, if we don't like what they're storing, can we not give them an extension?
As written right now, with some changes we just did to number... Paragraph B, the village manager would be the one that would be receiving the request for an extension. So it would be the village manager, whether they approve it, rescind it, or kick it to the planning commission at that point in time. If the applicant comes in. If the applicant doesn't come in, then the temporary use just goes away.
I don't know what happened.
Chuck, please, if you have a comment. State your name and address, please.
Snyder 2681 Hadley Road. So we have a person who is not conforming with their site plan, and the village manager rescinds this permit. As we discussed earlier, the store owner disagrees with the village manager. And we previously said, the recourse is they go to the ZBA, do not go to the planning commission. They wouldn't come here, they'd go to the ZBA because there's a disagreement that they have to resolve. The planning commission doesn't resolve it, that's not their job.
Right. But the last paragraph... Sentence in the paragraph does say that if at the village manager's discretion, any request for an extension can be forwarded to the planning commission for their review and approval. So that's in that instance, if the village manager doesn't want to make the call and say, "Well, you have to take your request for an extension to the planning commission," then that'll happen. If the planning commission makes the call and says... Excuse me. If the village manager says, "Nope, I'm denying you," then they would go to the ZBA because then the village... Then the property owner feels they've been aggrieved.
Jack? If what I believe is true is if the village manager's discretion, any request for an extension, is denied by the village manager, they would have to go through the application process again to the planning commission. That's how I'm looking at it. If I'm selling widgets and I have an application and approved by the planning commission to sell widgets outside, and I all of a sudden start selling wham-mits with my widgets, the next thing that happens is the village manager says, "Well, you didn't have a permit to sell wham-mits. Now you need to go to the planning commission to get that approved." Now, if there is a dispute in ordinance, if they say, "Oh, my fence is only five foot eight." No, my fence is six foot tall. No, my fence is five foot eight. You know, a dispute of the ordinance would go to ZBA. But at the time of extension or permit renewal, if it's unlike the previous application, they would have to come for a new application at the village manager's discretion because it's not what you originally had applied to sell outside.
Mm-hmm. That's the way I interpret it.
Thank you. That's helpful.
That's the way I interpret it.
That's the way I'm reading this. If all of a sudden I'm selling something on my permitted ordinance, and I'm following the ordinance to the T, and I change what I'm selling, now the village manager goes, "Whoa, I don't know if the village wants you to sell that in our village. You need to apply for an application." That's where it would come back to the planning commission. If the applicant says, "You're not giving me why? Because your fence is six foot one, not five-eight like you say." That's a ZBA call.
Right.
All right, I'm good with that.
The one thing I just pointed is that, you know, we are giving the village manager the discretion of describing what's a widget and what's a whammit.
Yes.
If you're selling one thing that's blue and then it's red, the village manager has the discretion to say, "It's the same item. It's, you know, it's not that big a deal. I'm going to give you granting approval." But if it's specific... Because we're not necessarily going to be on the application requesting the applicant to specifically say, state specifically... I guess you could. You could, if you wanted to, you could specifically say you are only allowed to sell 2018 bikes in this application. If you wanted to, then that would be a condition of site plan approval. But if you just say bikes are being sold, then whatever bike... As long as the... When the application gets renewed, the village manager says, "Oh, these are still bikes. You can keep going."
Another example, and I'll give you one in plain terms instead of using widgets and wham-mits. Bertik Street sells new equipment. Their application to me, I would presume, would be to display new equipment. All of a sudden, they get into the used four-wheeler business, and you got 10 used oil-leaking, ugly, dirty four-wheelers out there for sale. It's not new equipment. It's used junk that you're selling now. Then he would say, "You better go to the planning commission and get that approved because that's not new equipment."
Yep, that's true.
All right, I'm good with that. Leslie, I cut you off kind of quick with your questions. Did you have anything else you wanted to address?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
All right, good. Ms. Rose?
Okay. Something that Mo had said, and Leslie touched on it too. If the business is running from January to December, and they close their doors for a certain period of time, two months, three months, or whatever, are they allowed to keep their equipment...
Display sales?
Displayed in those two to three months within that year out in the open?
Why not?
Because you're blocking storage.
Why wouldn't you?
Well, they're not selling it. It's just sitting there, so it's okay to have it out there then.
It's still a viable business.
Okay.
I... That's the way I would think. I mean, I don't... I'm not in charge. I'm just...
Yeah, if they go on vacation for a month, the commission chair. Do you take it all down?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
I don't know.
To me...
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, to me, as long as they're still a viable business and they're still a going concern, even if they're not open.
And they've paid their fees.
They've paid their fees, and they've paid their taxes, and everything is in aces.
Okay.
You know, I sure wouldn't ask them to take everything and put it into storage for two months, although if they're, you know, if they're gone, obviously, there's a security issue, but it's their liability, not ours. Not ours.
Just want to make sure.
Would you agree with that?
Well, if their doors are closed and they're not in operation, I think they should put their stuff in storage, not leave it out in their yard. That's just my opinion.
Any other concerns in that regard?
I totally understand her concern. I don't know what I want to do about it.
Mario, just a second. Chuck, Mario, do you have any thoughts in that regard? I mean, is this an issue that... Are we just chasing a problem or are we looking for a problem?
Technically, right now, the definition that we have is a business whose principal activities is a consistent storage, display, or sale of goods. So it's listed in the definition right now as a type of activity. You know, something of that effect. Once again, we might fall back on other ordinances. If someone leaves their outdoor items for two months because they're in Aruba, and then over the... In the first week, everything falls down and it's all clattered and everything, you know, obviously, they'll... Hopefully, someone will make them aware so we can take care of it. But at the same time, there are other ordinances that I think could be applied by the village in terms of, you know, public health, safety, and welfare to try and address it, if it gets to that point.
Okay.
Number one, you'd think the property owner would make arrangements with someone to take care of their items, keep watch on them, that sort of thing.
All right.
But once again, that's why it comes to ordinances. We're not... As we know by this process, we're trying to be proactive in everything, but sometimes if... Sometimes you do have to be reactive. Sometimes you have to see how it goes after a year or two.
That's... I'm in complete agreement with that.
And then a year from now, Rose will be like, "See, I told you, we should have put something in there."
Well, and you can always say, "I told you so."
That's right.
Justin, anything you would like to add to any of this?
No, nothing.
All right. So given all that, is there any further discussion we'd like to hear in regards to this proposed All right, then I'll take that as no. Is there any chance that we'd like to entertain a motion to consider submission of this ordinance to the council for approval?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the village council the approval of the proposed outdoor display sales, section 4.1.2.8, with the changes to section 8.9 and B, as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
Good. Any further discussion? All right, Madam Secretary, I have a motion on the table to approve the proposed ordinance changes as referenced by Jack. I also have a... And that... The motion is that we submit this proposed legislation change to the council for approval or denial, as the case may be. I also have a motion for that. I'd like you to... I'd like to ask you, Madam Secretary, to conduct a roll call. Approval for this?
Hallard?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Heilak?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Dee, absent.
All right, good. That motion carries. Mario, my expectation is, is that between you and us and the rest of everybody, all of these changes will be written up as a formal ordinance proposal, and we'll submit to the council at the next available opportunity and see if this floats their boat.
I'll give you these changes if you notice.
Absolutely. All right, good. Thank you very much, everybody. That was very enlightening and a very encouraging conversation. All right, that concludes our item for eight, old business. We move on now to nine, which is new business, and I see on our agenda we have none. So now I open the floor up to public comment, and this is agenda and non-agenda-related items. So if there's any public comment, we can happy... Connie, did you have anything you'd like to say?
All right, good. All right. No public comment. Now consultant administrative comments. Mario, I always turn this over to you first if you have anything you'd like to share with us.
Yes, just that, given the importance of the annual report, I didn't want to necessarily just give it to you the evening of and then have you review it. So it'll be read... It'll be available to you prior to the next meeting, and you'll be able to review it. And it'll include a summary of our activities from 2018, and it'll also include a proposed action plan for the planning commission for 2018.
Good, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And that'll be available prior to the next meeting. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And does anybody have an idea when our next meeting will be? Might have a calendar open?
January... February...
Fourth...
Fifth?
Fifth?
I think it's the third, the Super Bowl?
Twenty-ninth.
That's the fifth Tuesday.
That's the fifth Tuesday.
That should be...
It's first and third.
The fifth.
Yeah, February fifth.
It's February fifth.
Well, that'll be Rose's birthday.
All right, happy birthday.
The day after.
All right, so we will, we will have a meeting that Tuesday. It will not be canceled because we have at least one item that's of importance to discuss. It may not be new business, but it will be, um, the issues that you brought up, Mario. So thank you very much for that. All right. Administrative comments. Um, Madam Secretary, anything from you since evening?
I have nothing.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner comments. Um, Jack, Oxford Township Planning Commission update?
Our planning commission was canceled last week. Uh, we also have a new planning commissioner, um, Meg Knoff is her name. She represents the Northeast Quadrant, she lives up in that area, and the other planning commissioners are all the same.
Okay. All right, good. Anything else?
The only other comment I've got, and it's just, this is the start of 2019, we will have Tough Mudder, I don't have the date solidified, but we have our first meeting with the Tough Mudder people to include the village police, the fire department, Parks and Rec, the township, the sheriff. Everybody sits down in rooms and says, what are we doing right this year? What do we need to get in escrow? TNA accounts for paying the cops and everything, so we'll have that going on, on the 16th of January.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Anything else? Rose, anything from ZBA?
Yes, the ZBA needs alternates, so if anybody's interested...
Okay.
Submit their application.
All right, thank you.
Um, the ZBA will also have their annual meeting in March. We have to go over and refine our bylaws a little bit, and then we'll have our annual meeting in March.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for that. And our, um, our chief is not here this evening to give a DD update, and Joe Frost is not here, so we, I'm assuming...
I actually have something to say.
I'm, I'm happy to hear it.
I'm just surprised I've got something to say.
No.
Uh, the village council is taking a very serious look at the marijuana laws.
Yep.
And you are very likely going to be called upon to help make some decisions in those regards.
Yep.
So start thinking about drugs, kids.
Okay.
Any way you want to think about it.
That was my understanding, they were going to revive that, I know.
A lot of options.
We got started, Mario, uh, the history on that, and you may have heard that from Chris, is that a while back, uh, the council had asked us to consider drafting, uh, some, um, ordinances, um, regarding, um, marijuana businesses in the village. And, um, we actually got started. Chris had done quite a bit of work, brought in some information, primarily looking at ordinances that had been written by other communities. Um, and we got started on that, and then all of a sudden, it seems like the council just decided they didn't want to consider it, and they shut everything down. So we stopped all of our actions on that. So, uh, Joe Frost has told me that, uh, there, they would like to maybe reconsider that coming forward because of the recent, um, changes in the law, because of the recent election, and the overwhelming support for that, um, that legislation that occurred in, from this area, from the actual village itself. And so apparently there is, uh, community support for this, and so we're going to revisit that, and apparently we'll be talking about that, you know, coming up this next year.
Let me, can I have one thing related to that? From my understanding, there's certain, like, we have, we have a zoning map, right? And there's only certain places you'll be able to, you'd be able to do that because of, of so many, um, closest to churches and schools and things like that? I think we've already, I think the planning commission at one, one time had already looked at that map.
Yep.
And I, and if, um, I think the map would basically tell you if we could move forward or not at all, and what areas would be available. So most areas in our village aren't available based on the federal, or based on the, on the state law now, that you have to be so close or so far away from a church and a school. So I think that would be start from number one, is make sure, to find out if there is any available places, and then, if there's no places, then we can't do anything because we can't follow the, the state law, so...
Mario, are we beholding the state law in terms of those specific guidelines, in terms of proximity primarily?
We are holding the state law in terms of both medical marijuana and forthcoming recreational marijuana. However, to the best of my knowledge, there aren't any, uh, proximity requirements or restrictions in the, um, actual statute. What it does say is that you, as a community, and a planning commission...
This is what I...
Can determine, uh, both...
We can set...
If you can, if you, uh, want to have those types of proximity location buffers, basically, and then also the, the distance of those buffers.
Yeah.
So, so the, the...
Hang on, Mo.
The one, the one good thing, I can say that, because it doesn't happen very often, but the state legislature, one of the good things that they allowed the municipality to decide is they didn't dictate specifically.
Right.
Because, for example, if this is exactly the case, if they said 1,500 square, uh, 1,500-foot separation distance, then places like Village of Oxford would be zoned out.
Right.
Because they were just thinking of townships rather than villages.
Right.
So the, the village does have that, um, uh, right and an opportunity. And that does specifically say, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, that the only way a, uh, facility could be located for medical marijuana in the village is if the village passed an ordinance that does allow them to be located. If the village chooses not to do anything, then a, a facility can't come in front of, can't come into the village.
Right.
So they can go in front of the medical marijuana board, or say, I want to have, I, I own this property in Oxford, I want to do this, and the, the, the first thing the state will say is, you have authority, you have approval from Oxford. If you don't, then you can't be located.
Right.
So that's one good thing about medical. About recreational, uh, they, they actually, you have to actively opt out if you do not want to have recreational marijuana facilities located within the village. So the village would have to take action to not allow recreational marijuana facilities.
Okay, well, let's save a lot of that conversation for when we actually get to it. I don't want to open up all that can of worms.
Unfortunately, I could see that.
It's okay, I mean, this, this should be a very interesting set of conversations, I'm sure, and I look forward to it. Um, Maureen?
I was just going to mention that it's, it's also the six different types of marijuana facilities.